We're going to go ahead and get started, folks. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Michael Pate, Jorge Soto Longo, Dave Roseacker as vice chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, planning director, Eric England, assistant planning director, Mike Carter, current planning manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our recording secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. The case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. And we're going to go ahead and get started with those cases that are on consent. Agenda item number two, case C-11-21-249, applicant Lyric Town Homes is on consent for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the PUR Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, laid over from our July meeting, location 1110 South 20th Avenue Plaza. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nine, case C-10-24-188, C-12-24-189, applicant Charles Hill Jr. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Hartman Ridge, a minor plat inside-city limits with rezoning from R2 to R3, location 5517 North 52nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda item number 10, case C-10-24-177, C-10-72-157, applicant Lyle Berkeley. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R6 to R5 along with the repeal of the PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District for a portion of the site. Property is located within an ED Environmental Overlay District. Location, west of 50th Street and Raven Oaks Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C-10-24-178, applicant Jay Nielsen. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R5, location 408 Williams Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-24-185, applicant Metro Driveway Replacement LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R435 to R5, location northwest of 45th and H Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-10-24-182-187, applicant Ada Maria Lucas. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R5, location 1231 South 15th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-7-24-180, applicant Above &amp; Beyond Therapy. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow medical office in the Allo District. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location, 12915 West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-7-24-163, applicant Sacred Heart Academy. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section 55883Q to allow secondary educational facilities in the R3 District, along with approval of a waiver to Section 55166 Height to allow a 36-foot-tall building addition. Property is a designated local landmark. Location, southwest of 36th and Burt Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number three, case C-8-21-150, C-8-21-158, applicant is Nebraska HBPA. It is on consent for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow indoor entertainment and outdoor entertainment in the GI District, along with approval of a major amendment to the Large Project Special Use Permit to allow development over 10 acres in the GI District. Property is located within the Flood Fringe, Flood Way, and MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. This was laid over from our June meeting, location 6303 Q Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number four, case C-8-20-188, C-8-20-191, applicant Karen Buddhist Society of Omaha. It is on consent for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow religious assembly in the DR District, and approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. This was laid over from our September of 2020 meeting, location 9861 North 60th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 12, case C-10-12-157, applicant Woodhouse Auto Family. It is on consent for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for West Dodge Point, location 17335 Burt Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Okay, those are the consent cases. Before I ask for a motion from the board, I just want to remind everybody, all the consent cases were left on consent. So once we take our vote today, there'll be no more discussion on those cases today. If you were here and want to discuss one, that opportunity is gone unless you stand up, so. Okay? Do we have a motion for the board for the consent cases that were on for approval?
I'll move for the approval of agenda items two, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero, six to zero?
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent cases that were on for layover?
Motion to layover cases three, four, and 12.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Okay, that ends the consent portion of the meeting. If you were here for one of those cases, we thank you for coming down. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. It's up to your decision, so. But thank you for coming down. We'll get going on the regular agenda. It's agenda item number one, case C-3-24-146, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Central Park Plaza, the Duo, TIF Redevelopment Project Plan, laid over from our July meeting, location 222 South 15th and 201 South 16th Street. And Bridget, you're up.
Good afternoon. Can you? Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Here to just briefly highlight the Central Park Plaza, the Duo, also called the Duo, TIF Redevelopment Project Plan. There was quite a bit of news about this.
Bridget, we're having troubles here, and if you could...
Sorry. Let me do this first.
Well, it sounds like it's all the way up, so we might need to just adjust the mic.
Okay, is this better?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Only a little. I don't know if this needs to stay there. Okay, is this any better?
That's good.
Okay, I'll have to stay right here, then. So as you see on the screen, the blue-shaded area represents the entire project development site, which includes the two towers here that front South 15th Street, and then it includes this site which fronts 16th Street. This is Douglas Street, and this is Farnham Street. So this is the entire site. The project does propose to completely repurpose, rehabilitate the two twin towers into residential living, about 700, a little over 700 units, one two and one-three-bedroom unit. And then on the west side, this particular site, the garage will be deconstructed, and a new city-owned garage will be constructed at that site, and then New Style Development will construct apartments above that. So this particular project, TIF project, involves rehabilitation of the twin towers, so rehabilitation and then new construction, but all residential. The ground floor of the twin towers does have commercial space, about 16,000 square feet, that is being renovated, and I will allow the developers that who are here, New Style Development is here, and I want to give them time to give you more details about the project. The TIF Committee did give approval of this project earlier this year, and we wanted to get it moved forward to the Planning Board. So with that, if there are any questions, the use is certainly compliant with the master plan, and as I said, the TIF Committee has given approval. So with that, I would ask for your approval and turn it over to the developer.
Thank you, Bridget. Any other proponents?
Yes, Todd Heeston, 222 South 15th Street with New Style Development. And I am excited about this project. It's going to really impact a building that probably was going to be sitting there. When we took it over in March, it was actually down to 30% occupied, and so we did consolidate everybody to the north tower. And so we're started, we're getting ready to start on the south tower, doing some demolition, getting things going. And the north tower won't start until June of 2026 to basically respond to everybody's leases and giving them plenty of time on the commercial office tenants. And then we do have, we do have good news. Sullivan's Steakhouse, so far, has decided to stay. We did give them till October to decide if they're going to move out. Then Starbucks, who had moved out in January, we do have an LOI on another commercial coffee shop. So we're working with them right now, trying to get the numbers figured out and make sure that's all going to work, but there's some excitement there. Then on 16th Street side, which the city planning's been working really hard on trying to come up with a solution for 16th Street, and so the new parking garage will have some retail on the lower level facing 16th Street, and then we will, we will be building on top of, like, call it a, still being designed, six to eight-story parking garage, and we'll be, you know, covering all the footings, anything extra, the transition slab on top, all the costs that would be associated with that will be, New Style will be paying for as part of the multifamily piece on top, which will be about 150 units on top of that. So it's a, yeah, there you go, the green space on top. So between that, the U shape on the east side of 15th Street, that drive-through that's always kind of been disruptive, Planning Department has always wanted that to go away, so we agreed that we'll go ahead and do public parking and straighten that block out and public improvements there. And then by the time we get done with the parking garage, all that, everything will be basically new sidewalks, new public improvements all the way around. And happy to answer any questions or comments.
Todd, glad you're doing this project.
Yeah.
Very much needed down there. Couple of questions for you. One is, first, I'm glad Sullivan's is staying there. Are they going to stay open?
They are. They'll be closed for about a three-week window. And they're kind of working at selecting that around all the, you know, between Christmas and World Series, so we're working, trying to come up with a time period.
Okay. And then, that's a lot of units that are going in there, and I assume you've done some sort of a market study with this, and what's your expected absorption period, and how much do you expect to have occupancy?
So that's, that was a big question. We had that when we turned Creighton Hospital into 732 units, and it was really, that one did scare me. And we're actually, by the time we CO'd the final floors, we're able to, for example, we're going to be able to start leasing in April, and we won't actually finish South Tower until almost probably November, so we'll be leasing as we go, which helps with that absorption rate, which is pretty scary. And from there, then the north tower is almost a year and a half behind that. So we feel real good on this one compared to Creighton, which we did in about a year and 11 months total, and just leased that up as we went. And we were actually, after, 30 days after CO, we hit 98% occupied, so. Yeah, so we did have some experience on that, and we're really planning it out and hitting that April summer market is the biggest piece of it.
Okay, that's good. Your rates seem to be fairly reasonable for...
We do. We try to stay under the market just a little bit and give everybody a good chance.
Yeah, good job. Appreciate you.
Hey, Todd, on the, on the Parkinson's, that's going to be a city structure, and that's going to be open to anybody to use. How do you, how do you deal with your tenants? Are they not going to have spots, or is there a deal that's in place for so many of those to be on a long-term lease?
That's a great question, because we were really worried about that, too, as well. And so Hannah, who took over Ken Smith's position temporarily now, and she really works with everybody, and she does have that in different parking garages or operate in different ways, and so if a tenant wants to pay a premium, and the city's happy to take the money, then they can have a designated spot. And so then they still are able to oversell some of the floors. The bonus on this is we're actually going to have it to where it crosses, the building will attach, as you can see in that yellow, it'll attach to that, but then it also has an attached, the skywalk that goes across Douglas over into Park One, which is 730 stalls. So we feel really good about the parking situation, along with Mutual of Omaha, so the person that really doesn't want to pay that premium for a park, you know, for their own stall, and we get a lot of that. If you ever notice around, like, the wire or the high line up through there, there's a lot of people that still just park the meters and figure it out. I, I'm not sure how, but they do now. But they, they do, and so we'll have the Mutual of Omaha parking, which is night, and almost 2,000 stalls there. So we feel really good about the parking around the building now.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Todd? Thank you, Todd. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just that we're super excited to be able to work with a developer who has such a, you know, a solid history and conversion of buildings, you know, Todd had mentioned Creighton, the hospital building, also have the Breakers Building just southeast of downtown. So, you know, we're really excited to really bring a lot more activity to this block, and so we're excited to have these 700 units, and we'll fully support this for recommendation for approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Okay, agenda item number five, case C-3-24-135, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of amendment to Chapter 55 zoning regarding landscaping regulations and urban design code in addition to an amendment to Chapter 24, planning regarding the Urban Design Review Board. Location, City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Eric, you're going to handle this?
Yeah, so I'll give a brief introduction. We also do have city planner and landscape architect Tim Fries from our urban design section available for any more in-depth questions or commentary that may arise. So, yeah, there's two components to this zoning code amendment. It's a text amendment that changes some of the urban design code section material as well as landscaping regulations. And then there's also a part about an amendment to Chapter 24, which doesn't usually come up before this board, but because it is related to those urban design zoning code sections, we thought it was appropriate that the board, you know, at least have that information in this report. Chapter 24 is the Planning Department section, and specifically, it relates to the Urban Design Review Board. And so to get briefly into what those code amendments would be, is this would modify the makeup of the board. Since its inception in 2007, there's a public and a private component with different members, different alternates. So you would have voting members that would only vote on publicly funded projects, and you'd have other members that vote on private developments that may go to that board. To simplify matters and to bring it more in alignment with most of the other boards that the Planning Department and City of Omaha runs, we would eliminate that public and private differentiation and just have one, one full board, which we think is a good change. It also clarifies what projects would need to go to the review board, as some of the language had been vague in the past. Regarding the landscaping regulations, these are fairly minor edits, but it is important to clean up and provide clarifications, both on definitions of tree, an overstory tree, the purpose of the landscaping article, a screening component when there is a buffer yard, and related to parking lots and drive-throughs, as well as tree planting and maintenance. Several of the sections refer to the City of Omaha standards for urban landscaping, which is basically a planting guide that has been in place since 1987. So there's obviously been a lot of change in landscaping and trees and, you know, different species in that time, you know, such as example, the, you know, Emerald Dashboard, you know, other issues related to that. So we are eliminating that document, but it'll reference ongoing updated planting guides for recommendations for, you know, whether it's buffer yard trees or street trees, that'll be kept on file with the Planning Department. So here to answer any questions from the board, like I said, we do have Tim Fries available. Anytime there is a zoning code amendment, we do send notification of the case to all registered neighborhood associations, of which are over 200 on file. We did hear from three individuals requesting more information, but there had been no concerns stated to us.
Okay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add?
Just recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Agenda item number six, case C-3-24-186, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvements Plan. Location, City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, and you were going to handle this also.
I will, yeah. So Derek Miller provided an in-depth presentation to you in the pre-meeting. I won't get into those details. This is a sizable document, but it's the annual capital improvement program, so this would cover the years of 2025 through 2030, a six-year program that was released when the mayor announced her proposed budget two weeks ago. Just a quick recap and summary, how this process evolves throughout several months. Planning Department helps facilitate in conjunction with multiple city departments in the mayor's office, comes up with recommended projects that fit into the allocated bond dollars for each section. There's the mayor's priority committee, which is comprised of mayor as chairwoman, the planning director, finance director, public works director, and city attorney. With that being said, seek your approval. The projects are in compliance with the master plan, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions? You don't want to add anything?
Just recommend approval.
Okay, do we have any?
Second.
Okay, thanks. I was going to say motion, I couldn't get the word out. Kathy, we have a motion and a second. Please... a motion and a second. Please record the vote.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
On agenda item number seven, Sidney Franklin has a conflict with this, so she's going to recuse herself from the meeting. Let the record show that Sidney has left the chambers. Agenda item number seven, KC 3-24-19. Applicant Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of amendment to the NODO TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: South and West of 12th and Nicholas Streets. Don, you're up.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This is an amendment to the NODO Tax Increment Financing Project Plan, a plan that the Planning Board approved a few months ago. It's located in the Millwork Commons area, our district, two lots, they're on these vacant lots here next to this historic building. And with this amendment, it's focused primarily or exclusively on the financial structure of the redevelopment. The physical nature is unchanged. The project remains a five-story mixed-use development with 12,400 square feet of first-floor commercial retail space and 78 market-rate apartment units on the upper four levels. The developer is NODO LLC, which is managed by the White Lotus Group, overseen by Arun Agarwal. Total investment in this project is about $19.6 million. It's an investment in our downtown. The TIF request that initially came in at $1.9 million a few months ago has been increased. They are requesting now $2,616,662 in TIF program support. And the estimated final value of the project at $13.99 million supports the amount of TIF requested, and we have ample TIF-eligible uses, areas where they can use the TIF funds legally. I would note that this is also a project that is applying for EEA, that's the Enhanced Employment Area Program, for some assistance with the financing. That EEA application is being processed by the EEA committee and headed up by the mayor's office presently. And we make sure when we do these that the TIF-eligible costs and the EEA-eligible costs are separated, and there's no overlap. But anyway, this is a request for $2,616,662 in TIF support. The project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. The amendment has been approved by the city's TIF committee. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and we ask for your approval.
Tom, just a hypothetical here. What happens if the EEA application does not get approved?
I'd probably have to go back to the drawing board and see if they can still make the project work.
Because it's being processed right now, right?
It's in process, and initial responses look good. There's no guarantees, of course.
Yeah. I'm curious more than anything what happens.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Drew Silva, on behalf of White Lotus Group, 10404 Essex Court. I don't have anything specifically to note. I just appreciate Don and the team working with us to update. I would note, in terms of your, I guess, your question regarding EEA, the EEA that we have applied for is an ongoing benefit related to year-over-year financing. So it helps effectively the bottom line of the project. It is not a determinant for purposes of moving this forward from a construction perspective, because ultimately it's developer equity either way.
Not cash injection?
No. Not at a financial closing. Right. That's right. So otherwise, I'm here to address any comments, but nothing to add.
Thank you, Drew. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions before we hear from Eric? Eric, did you want to add anything?
You know, obviously, we've seen this multiple times, whether it's the TIF previously, or the rezoning, or the alley vacation. And obviously, we support the project. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero.
Mike, will you let Sidney move? We'll wait a second for Sidney to come back in. And let the record show that Sidney Franklin has rejoined the meeting. Moving on, agenda item number eight, KC 10-24-183, C12-24-184. Applicant University of Nebraska Board of Regents, request preliminary and final plat approval of West Omaha Replat 8, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R6 and R7 to R7. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location: Southwest of 38th Avenue and Dewey Avenue. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Luke Weatherly with Olson, here on behalf of UNMC, who is the applicant or University of Nebraska Board of Regents, address 2111 South 67th Street. Here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to add anything?
I don't think I need to spend much time, obviously. You know, there's been great growth in the Med Center, and they have a lot of projects going on, and this is one of many. So, you know, it's basically providing housing for students and/or staff. So, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R6 and R7 to R7, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions in the report, approval of the final plat subject to some little of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council.
Any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from R6 and R7 to R7, approval of the preliminary plat subject to meeting the following eight conditions in the report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Agenda item number 15, KC 8-16-40. Applicant Hanson Property Development, Inc., request approval of a major amendment to a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI District. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe and floodway overlay districts. Location: 5940 South 60th Street. Clancy, you're up.
My name is Clancy Peterson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. U-Pullit is an existing auto salvage...
Need an address, Clancy.
Address 14747 California Street, Suite 2.
Okay, thank you.
U-Pullit, as I said, is an existing scrap metal and auto salvage operation. They are at 5940 South 60th Street, where they've operated since 1986. U-Pullit has grown with the Omaha auto salvage and scrap metal market since then, and currently employs 60 people in the Omaha area, and purchase around 30% of Omaha's impound inventory at auctions each week or every other week as those auctions are held. U-Pullit is requesting a major amendment to its special use permit, which allows scrap metal and salvage operations currently to include the use of improved recycling equipment, including a 3-Tech Alpha 7400 hammer mill. U-Pullit is requesting a layover at this time to address deficiencies in its application and to allow time to work with Planning Department to develop a noise mitigation plan and provide for some testing. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clancy. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Thomas White. I'm an attorney. My address is 3214 St. Mary's Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I represent the Nebraska Future Fund. We're very concerned about this entire process. This entire, very substantial industrial facility was built in utter contempt for the permitting and the ordinance laws of the city. The city knew since February, when representatives of Nebraska Future Fund contacted it, that they were constructing a multimillion-dollar facility without applying for one permit. It is our understanding that not once, but up to four times, stop work orders were issued, and they were completely ignored. Now, you all, all of you, honorably commit your time to support a permitting process and the rule of law in these matters. This is not the first time this company has acted in violation of these orders. If you look at the city planning note, back in 2016, they filled illegally parts of a floodplain. Now, the concerns as raised by the city in the letter to you are not even all, or even close to all of the serious concerns presented by this facility. If we put aside the fact that they have violated the law and violated all the permits, they are on a floodplain. It's unclear if they need to get permission from the RME Corps of Engineer. We have videotaped from a drone of them operating this permit and dumping wastewater coming off of the concrete pad. That pad has oil on it. It has gasoline. It has antifreeze. It has heavy metal substances. And we have video of it flushing directly untreated into the Papio River. Now, the stuff that comes out of a car when it's shredded contains something called AFR. It's after shredding residue. ASR is considered a toxic substance that should be bagged and sent to an appropriate land mill. This is uncovered right now at this site, and a big wind can spread it. It is also intensely flammable. And when it is caught fire, and these are not, unfortunately, not rare occurrences in these kind of operations, it leaves a toxic plume of smoke. Now, look at the neighbors on this facility. We have soccer fields, a baseball field. We have the Funplex. We have the Horseman's Park. We have the Warhorse. We have Milt's Golf. This is a serious issue and deserves a very serious look at, one, whether or not this particular applicant should come to this board and ask for mercy when they've done nothing but act with contempt for the entire legal process. Two, we need to have a very serious environmental study. Sound is just a small part of it. Water pollution, air pollution, whether or not it's safely operated in terms of our fire department. These are all issues that I think are serious enough that this board should seriously consider whether or not it should even give them a permit after they have completed all the work, whether you should ignore that violation and allow them to try to mend their hold. That's why we oppose it. But if you do go forward, we urge that there be the most strenuous environmental traffic studies. These facilities will pull 50 to 100 semi-trucks a day when they're operating. And the traffic study is just considered okay. There is no way a serious look at that issue has occurred. This should not be allowed to, this project should not be allowed to ignore the laws that all other Omahans and developers must obey in the city. Thank you.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? And please, while seated, refrain from any clapping or cheering or anything. So, go ahead. You can name an address, please.
My name is Stephanie Matthews, and my address is 5710 M Street. I guess just in addition to what he's saying, I live right there, right there. So I am concerned about health issues for my family and my neighbors. So I just wanted to add that I live in the community, and I wanted my voice to be heard.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi, Teddy Morrison, 3524 Hawthorne Avenue. This isn't about noise pollution. Frankly, I don't care about noise. What I do care about is the health and well-being of the people of Omaha. And the ASR, auto shredder residue, what that is, is imagine if you took your entire car, every part of it, the glass, the metal, the plastic, the gasoline that's left over, the oils, and you shredded that down into dust that was in the air that you were breathing in. That's what this is. It releases cadmium into the air, benzene, BHPs, lead. A 2013 Italian study of 21,000 pregnancies within four miles of an auto shredder found an exceptionally high correlation between premature births and living near the auto shredder. They tried multiple controls. They did sensitivity studies, and they kept getting the same results. The closer you lived to the shredder, the more likely your child was to be born very premature and underweight, and to suffer long-term health consequences because of that. This ASR, when you breathe it in, it affects your lungs, and then it crosses that barrier into your blood. People get blood cancer around these. They get lung cancer, kidney disease, reproductive health ailments, and children have higher rates of asthma when they live next to these auto shredders. So for those reasons alone, permitting aside, doing it on time aside, this shouldn't exist in our city. If you look at other cities that have had these, you can see explosions in Chicago. You can see hazardous material spills in California. This is a hazard to the community more than it is to our sensitivities about noise or traffic. And it should be treated as such. Teddy, like a bear. Yeah. I used to be.
Okay. I'm just curious how you got, where you got your research from. Because you gave us some pretty specific details.
Yeah. If you just look up ASR or auto shredder residue in PubMed on Google Scholar and anything like that, you can find things about the, because I saw the Stop the Shredder website, and I was confused and concerned. So of course, I went to my friend Google, and everything I read about it just kind of horrified me. I didn't realize that in 2024, this is what we were doing to our air and water, and like, to kids, you know?
Just wanted to make sure you didn't stay in Holiday Inn Express last night or something. No, you get some great information, though, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other opponents? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Greg, can I bring Tom back up real quick?
I was going to bring Clancy. Well, you want to bring Tom up first? Go ahead.
Tom, would you mind?
Yes, sir.
So just, you mentioned Nebraska Future Fund.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us, I don't think any of us are familiar with that. Now, since you represent, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, can tell you, it's a group concerned about economic justice and environmental issues. One of the concerns we have with the shredder here, this is, the residents here are below the normal income level, and it's, again, very dangerous industrial processes being dumped in a neighborhood without permitting, without hearing. Nebraska Future Fund, there's some folks that didn't like what they saw here, and they organized as a result.
Okay. And they're organized in state of Nebraska?
Yeah, they're Nebraskans, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Who are the folks?
I'm not permitted to tell you that, sir. I'm an attorney, and I can tell you my client is Nebraska Future Fund, as far as individual...
I'm trying to find out who that is, and I can't find out.
Yeah. And all I can tell you is I'm not permitted to identify individual members. It's like, and that's well-recognized. For example, various people are in various political environments, and they're concerned about political backlash. So I simply cannot identify individuals who are part of it. Yeah. But thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Clancy, would you come down, please? Need your name and address again.
Clancy Peterson, 14747 California Street, Suite 2.
I'm going to, I know this is on, recommended for layover. Do you want to take the opportunity now to address these concerns, or do you want to wait and address them at the meeting that you'd be on the agenda for?
It's probably most productive to address them later. We are willing to mitigate any environmental issues that are pointed out by regulators. by regulators, and willing to comply with all of that. As far, as far as the ASR, about 90% of the non-recyclable product from cars is removed before they go into these things. It's not like we drive them into the hammer mill. They're drained of all the fluids. It's most beneficial for everyone if the cleanest possible product goes into this resizing apparatus. It's essentially what it's doing, is just making it as small and condensed as possible. And as far as a, an advocacy group for environmental concerns, this is recycling. This is just what recycling looks like. This is a brand-new machine. It's on a concrete pad to reduce the dust and other debris there. We're trying to keep it as clean as possible because it's best for, for everybody. As far as runoff, we have that in our designs, our engineers. We have an industrial storm permit that requires us to capture and treat the first half inch of the stormwater. That's in our plan. We are willing and prepared to satisfy all regulations in order to get this up and operational.
Clancy, one follow-up question. I mean, I know you wanted to maybe wait, but you want to address the allegations of permitting and continuing to operate when you knew that the proper permits were not provided, dropped in?
Yeah, there is a stop work order issued now. They're not operating at all. There is no activity even on the concrete pad that was poured.
But there were, there were prior requests.
And the prior requests, I believe the confusion is permitting is a pretty broad term, permitting for flood term, floodplain, and permitting for the building permit. I believe between the, because you pull it themselves, poured the concrete, and the coordination effort there, I think permitting, they were asking who was in charge of permitting. They thought somebody else was taking care of all of the permits, and a couple fell through, as far as which, who was in charge of submitting those permits. So those stop work orders were submitted, and it sounds like there's just confusion, a breakdown in communication. And once the stop work order came in, everybody's able to get back on the same page. We understand this is a process we have to go through in order to get up and operational. The generator that's there that powers the thing's been taken out. It will not operate until we've satisfied, you know, all applicable regulations and satisfied the planning department.
Mike? Mike, if I may?
Yeah.
It's me up here.
Okay.
Just for your information, to go on the record, three stop work orders were issued on May 22nd, June 17th, and June 26th. And it wasn't until after the June 26th stop work order that they stopped.
Okay. Are you aware of that, Clancy?
I came in in July, so I didn't have, wasn't involved then. I read that those orders were issues, were issued, but I got it just after the Fourth of July.
Yeah, that doesn't, you know, from my lens, anyway, that doesn't, that doesn't play out very well when, when, on three different occasions, you had no, your client had notices and continued to operate without any respect to getting the proper permits. So I don't know where it's going to end up, but you've got a lot of work to do.
Understood. And we're trying now to repair the trust and move forward. It can't go back in time. By the time I, you know, we had it, we kind of know where we need to go now, and it's to be completely transparent with everybody, including concerned neighbors. We've reached out to each and every one of our neighbors that are around us, you know, some that were already mentioned, and they don't have any objection. They know what operation we have and what we're planning to do, and we haven't received any negative feedback from any of our neighbors that are, that are actually, you know, close to us. We have industrial neighbors, and, you know, they know that this is an industrial use.
Well, you provide, we've said this in the, in the meeting, you provide a very valuable service. I mean, what you're doing is a valuable service to the community, obviously, but you've got to comply with the rules and regulations that exist, and I know you know that as an attorney, right? You understand that. And I know your clients here as well. I think you, you need to really work on that and work with the city in order to get back into, into good graces with, with where you need to be. But you've got a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
In order, and you've got a big investment out there. You've got a huge investment, I think, that you want to make sure you protect.
Understood.
At all costs.
Understood.
I just want to say, Clancy, I know some of this happened before you came on board, so I want to thank you for trying to get this going in the right direction. I don't know what direction that'll always, that'll ultimately end up in, but I thank you for working with the planning department, working with us, and working with your neighbors. And I can stress to continue to work with the neighbors. That always helps to let people know. It helps to let people know what's going on in their, in their area, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate, I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Like Mike says, yeah, you got a tough job.
Yeah, there's, we know there's work to be done. We're willing to do it. I think we've, we have everybody back now on the same page, understanding, yeah, this is, this has to be done before anything can operate, and this is the way it needs to be done going forward. Otherwise, we're going to be right back here, and all their machines are, they're new, you know, good machines are going to be turned off, and I think the point has absolutely sunk in, and we're able to lockstep going forward to make sure we're communicating with the planning department and going through the correct legal process.
Okay. Thanks, Clancy.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, you're familiar with the city's recommendation report and the materials within that. Director Fensel had, had mentioned the specific violation, letters and dates. So, yeah, they're, they're, the city is concerned of how this has come up to this point, and of course, we will continue to work with the applicant. We'll continue to work with, you know, proponents, opponents, anyone, you know, who wants to have discussions on the case. But, yeah, there needs to be a lot done here, and, you know, I guess the first step is receiving proper permitting for the improvements or pavement that have not received the appropriate permits as of this time. And so, it is our understanding, there has been work towards, application towards those permits, so I guess that's a start. But, yeah, there are, you know, environmental concerns, noise concerns, not following previous, you know, approvals of the special use permit in 2016, and whether that was due to, you know, a grand plan of, of when, you know, work would be done within buildings. The information that comes to us needs to be specific, and if it is a long-term plan, it needs to be noted on that, okay? If there's immediate improvements, or if there's long-term goals or plans of work being done either outside or within buildings, it should be clear to us at the city. It should be clear to the planning board. You know, if this proceeds to city council, it should be clear to the council members of, of what is being requested and what specific capacity. And, you know, so we encourage ongoing conversations about those details, as well as showing that within their operating statement, as well as on their plans. Yeah, what has been submitted regarding the noise is not in compliance with, with Omaha's zoning codes. And so, the city's not going to support noise variances, so a solution has to, has to be made so that this facility and all their operations comply with the noise ordinances, as well as every other applicable code and regulation. You know, Public Works has an air quality division. They're aware of this submittal and request, and so we'll be engaging with them, as well as stormwater individuals in that division within Public Works. So it's a whole team effort, it's not just planning, but obviously, we are kind of the tip of the, you know, the conversation with the applicant moving forward, so I just can't stress it enough that we have a long ways to go, and obviously, the city's recommending layover.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Paige?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Agenda item number 16, Case C7-24-176, applicant Brooks Builders, Inc. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R2 district. Location 3315 South 115th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
I'm Stacy Farrenbrook with Brooks Builders. Our address...
What was the name again?
Stacy Farrenbrook with Brooks Builders. 20321 South 192nd Plaza, Springfield, Nebraska, 68059. I don't specifically have anything to add. I read through the report and the information that was provided. During the process, I've been in contact with Patrick Butler with the conditional use permit while applying and asking the needs of our client and what they were proposing to use it for. So I think I've answered all those, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
All right. Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hi, I'm Anthony Solotto, and I own the property. We've been there 18 years. It's just going to be used for, we plan on retiring in the next couple of years out of state, so we're going to sell the house to our daughter and her fiance, and they want to raise their kids there in the same house that they grew up in and went to Prairie Lane Grade School in Westside. So we just want to come back and stay in this unit. That's why we want to build this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Steve Flourish. I own the property at 3329 South 115th Street. It's not next door to this house, but it's one more down. This, well, we've lived in that neighborhood for 28 years. I know a lot of the people during that house. I'm not familiar that such a separate dwelling unit is, exists on any other properties in Prairie Lane. Prairie Lane, as you may know, is kind of a closed-off section neighborhood, was centered on the north part and the L Street basically on the south, and it goes basically from 120th on the west to the interstate. There's no real-through streets. It's a real neighborhood street, and it's Zoned R2, which by definition is single-family residential and low density. I think what they're asking to do here is just flies in the face of the definition of R2, and I've been told that there is some vehicle for making an exception to this, but to me, this is, this changes the character of the neighborhood. Once we start, this is an open neighborhood with, you know, sizable yards, but just medium housing. I mean, it's not real big fancy houses, but we moved into it, and I think most of the people moved into it because of the character of the neighborhood. They say that this is for family, and that may be. I don't know these folks. I have nothing against them personally, but this changes the character of the neighborhood. Once this starts, I think we've taken the lid off a can of worms, where people can start putting separate dwelling units, and I don't believe it's restricted to family. You know, if you want additional room for family, add on your house. We've, we've done that. A lot of people have done that in the neighborhood. But to me, this is just a game changer. Once we grant this on one property in that neighborhood, you know, this is going to be a spiral till people want to, for economic reasons, you know, just want to build a separate house and rent that out or do whatever they want. Nothing against renting. I don't have anything against that. There's a fair amount of rental units in the neighborhood, but I just think this in particular is a game changer. It's going to change the amount of traffic. If this thing takes off in the neighborhood, it is going to change, change the look and the feel of the neighborhood. I mean, this is kind of a wide-open neighborhood, and I think it's going to change the economics. I don't know, I can't tell you what this is going to do to property evaluations, but, you know, I just can't believe that this is going to be, you know, a positive for improving the valuations of the neighborhood, too. So, you know, I got notified because I'm within 300 feet, so I don't know how many people that really notifies, but I know a lot of people in this neighborhood. I've lived there a long time. I would just guarantee you, the vast majority have no idea this is a possibility. They have no idea that this is on the agenda here today, and I would just guarantee you from the people that I know that they appreciate the community as is, and they would not support this kind of a change that would just really change the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Steve? Any other opponents?
Can I add a comment, too?
Just, I'll, I'll bring you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Stacy, if you want to come up, and you can address the concerns of Steve if you choose to.
I guess a couple of things. It's my understanding, Steve, that you don't live on the street. You actually rent the house out that you're talking about?
Let's talk to the board.
Oh, sorry. So my point is, he does not live in the neighborhood, so it will not directly affect him. There will be...
All right. Just Stacy, stop for a second. Steve, it may be difficult, but, because something was said in your, towards you, but you got to remain silent while you're seated, okay? All right. Go ahead, Stacy.
So with what I was saying, I don't feel that it directly affects him personally and where he lives and the traffic and whatnot. Additionally, there will be no more traffic because of the ADU. As my client stated, this is for his family to continue to live there, for them to come back and visit. They'll have direct access from the existing house to the ADU. The ADU doors open into the, the back of the yard, which everything about the design that I've done complies with the R2 and the ADU requirements. I understand about opening a door for potential ADUs in the future and things possibly getting out of control, but that's why the UDO was set up this way with the R2 and that everybody that, it's my understanding, if you're within a R2, then you have to come before the board because each ADU is a conditional use permit or special permit. So I think that if people continue to follow the rules and the permitting process that they're supposed to follow, every one of them will come before the board.
Stacy, about how much is that going to run to build that unit?
We haven't finalized all the numbers yet because we were looking to get through this process first and just make sure that it was a feasible project, but this is a little over, well, it's under 400 square feet. It's about 360 square feet, so we're looking in the range of 50,000 to 60,000 when we're all done with it. It's going to have basic, you know, features within the house, enough for when my clients are here visiting that they can be out there. It'll be fully insulated, comply with all the energy efficiency codes, everything like that.
No renting it. They're just, just family use only.
No renting.
And I understand Steve's concerns on things, you know? It's, it's different. It's a change for the city, but there is quite an expense to, I don't see it developing where everybody's going to rush out and spend 60, 70, and as prices continue to go up, you know, to build these units, you know, maybe at some point there will be, but, but I just wanted to know, like, you know, what that kind of cost would be, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
This is going to be built on slab?
Yes, it'll be slab-on-grade.
Okay.
And it's tucked behind the house. I don't know if y'all want me to pull this up on the screen, the site plan?
Yeah, we've got, sure, go ahead in our packet.
So just lift and, oh. Okay. Sleeping?
Yeah, it's coming on. There you go.
Okay, so let me, so here's the Solotto residence right here. From this, this is obviously an existing GIS map, but they, they used to have a shed back there that is no longer there, but essentially, the accessory dwelling unit will be tucked in back there. It meets all the required setbacks that are set forth in the UDO. It meets the maximum height requirement, the maximum square footage, maximum permeable versus impermeable. I took a lot of time to obviously design this to make sure that I met with everything because this is important to the family, and I, I think it, like you said, it is something that in the future, I think we'll see more of just because of families and growing and getting older and, and things like that, and wanting to stay within their, with their families, so I just vote y'all approve it.
Yeah, they're relatively new to Omaha, but not to the rest of the country, so...
Correct. I actually do architecture for a firm down in Georgia, and they have complete site sets. site setup where they've gone in and revitalized neighborhoods and put new housing along with ADUs along the back just because there is so much multi-generational family, you know, living in spaces and just needing their own spaces. So I think when they're done right and they go through the correct process, I don't see a problem with it, but. Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions from the board?
I have one question. As somebody who's spent a lot of time in South Omaha, I mean, I've seen a lot of ADUs. I mean, they exist there. They've existed there. You know, now we have a mechanism for developing this in Omaha, so I think they're pretty interesting. I'm kind of curious what your thoughts are on the advantages of doing an ADU versus just expanding the footprint of your current home.
I think some of it just has to do with the needs of what the space is needed, you know, needed for. If, if it's family coming back to visit and they want to have their own time but be, you know, on the residence or on the, at that location, you know, my clients can go there, stay there, make their own dinners, have the grandkids out for breakfast or whatever it is or snack time, but if it's all within one house and then you're trying to split it up and put additional kitchens or kitchenettes, then you're kind of getting into a whole different realm of why that house was initially designed. And then you have these cookie cutter, or, I mean, pieced-milled houses that you see sometimes in South Omaha that have, or all over, but two and three kitchens, and then they're just awkward for resale and, you know, remodeling, that sort of thing. So I think it just depends on the use of the homeowner.
They'll have their own kitchen and bathrooms in this unit as well?
It will. It'll have a small kitchen with just a small range, and hopefully there's room for a dishwasher, and then just a small bathroom with a shower in it.
So maybe a privacy issue related to that, too, as well?
Uh-huh.
Is that it for Stacy? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you. Do you want to close this?
Eric, did you want to add anything?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so Planning Department on several levels have been involved in leading up to this, you know, not this specific application, but just this general topic. Just to provide a little context, because this is the first conditional use permit that's come to the Planning Board for, under the new ADU code that was approved by City Council in March of this year. So prior to that, in December of 2022, the City of Omaha approved a Housing Affordability Plan that had been a year-long, plus-year-long effort, just really looking at, you know, the housing needs, affordability, concerns and challenges that not only Omaha faces, but cities across the country and the world. Obviously, we talk about this frequently in front of this board. This isn't the first time I've said these words. But as part of that approved plan and trying to, you know, find ways that the city can help facilitate more affordable housing, but also just more housing units in general. There's a great need. Thousands of units are needed in all parts of the city, and, you know, we're all aware of escalating costs and challenges and everything related to housing and non-housing projects. As implementation began a part of that HAP after 2022, there are several groups working on this that, not only city staff, but several members of the community, housing interests, developers, housing advocates, nonprofits that deal with housing. There are several, you know, dozens, probably fifty or sixty individuals, trying to work on solutions and implementation, and I lead one of those groups, and really, a major part of that group is, is looking at ways to make zoning code modifications that can help facilitate more housing and more affordable housing. And one of the low-hanging fruits that really was recognized immediately, both with the HAP and just through our experience, was code developed towards missing middle housing and more specifically as the first attempt with, with the ADU code. So we spent a lot of time, as I mentioned, this was approved by City Council in March of this year. So there are several districts where ADU is permitted. In the lower-density districts such as R one, R two, such as this neighborhood, it does require a conditional use permit because, yes, it is different. As Jorge had mentioned, there are, you know, there are hundreds of historical ADUs that have, you know, been developed, converted, many of them illegally, a hundred years ago in South Omaha, North Omaha, eastern portions, older neighborhoods of our city, you know, and this really provides a mechanism for all parts of our city and jurisdiction to provide this housing type. So we are pleased with the application. We do appreciate, you know, the first one coming in for a conditional use permit that is not seeking waivers and variances. So I do applaud the applicant on that and working with city staff and understanding what those codes and regulations are. So I know it's different for neighborhoods, and there will be, you know, this won't be the last time that we hear of concerns of neighbors, but really it, it's an effective way that can, you know, with Anthony's situation, you know, it's a good scenario. I don't know how often he'll be there, how often he'll be staying there, but it is an effective use and a way to provide another housing unit. There will be situations where it won't be a family member, but those are acceptable as well. The units cannot be sold off into their own property, so they have to remain as part of the same ownership of the primary residence. I spoke last week on a panel for Urban Land Institute on ADUs. There was four of us, and there was great interest, and we've seen a lot of interest. There have been several rezonings that have gone through this Planning Board and City Council, mostly to take a property to R five where it is permitted. So we're holding meetings pretty much weekly with people that are interested in ADUs. I don't think it'll be this huge rush of units, but hopefully it does take off. And, but we want it to be successful. We want it to fit in with the neighborhood, and so we are supportive of this request. And for the conditions, it's very short. It's about as short as a use permit could ever have, but staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit for the ADU in the R two district subject to the two conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
I guess, I'd just make, I could make a comment for sure. And just to address some of your issues and to expand on what Eric has said, that today, the cost of new construction is just, as everything else, is just skyrocketing. And if you look at new construction, single-family, it's not unusual to see the, the infrastructure cost and the land cost to almost be fifty percent of the value of the building, and it's just making it impossible for starter homes of any reasonable. There's a starter home in Omaha, new construction, probably under three hundred thousand dollars. And, so if you're looking at an accessory building where you don't live here all the time, to try to buy something like that, it's just, it's crazy. And so we have all this infrastructure, all this land inside the existing city that can be better utilized. Now, this type of thing is really a unique thing, and it's not likely that just some Tom, Dick, and Harry is going to be living in this. It's going to be a lot of cases like this because it's a close relationship. You aren't going to want somebody living in your yard, so to speak, that you don't have a relationship with. So we view it as a good opportunity for us to be able to allow some variations to our zoning that would accommodate a very unusual and specific use. And it's for that reason why, at least I voted for the, through the ordinance chain, so that we could do this. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, excuse me, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R two district subject to the two conditions the staff record.
We have a motion and second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Agenda item number seventeen, case C seven dash twenty-four dash one seventy-nine, applicant Mental Health Association, request approval of a conditional use permit to allow small group living disabled in the G C district. Location, sixty fifty-five Country Club Road. I'm going to hear from the applicant, please. There she is. I was looking for her.
Sit over there this time. Hi, I'm Tessa Dominguez with the Mental Health Association of Nebraska, sixteen forty-five N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh eight. As you guys know, we've purchased a property at six zero five five Country Club Road and been looking at how we can utilize this property to expand our services into the Omaha metro community. Because I've been up here before, you guys have most likely heard my own personal story, why MHA has a passion for the work that we do, so I'm not going to reiterate any of that today. What I really want to talk about is that MHA's priority population is and always has been supporting and advocating individuals that live with behavioral health challenges. That's been the root of all of our programs since the beginning in two thousand and one. This property won't be any different than that. We are requesting a conditional use permit for a small group living disabled to support individuals living with these exact challenges. The house will be staffed twenty-four seven. There could be anywhere from one to four staff members on the premises at any given time. We will provide wraparound services and groups related to wellness and recovery, as well as work with community partners to provide the needed supports for individuals. These individuals would live at the greenhouse for approximately three months if this was approved. Why, while they're there, they will be working towards building a strong foundation for successful independence in the community. That would be our goal. Other than that, the only thing that I would like to say is that, that we are hoping to find new ways of becoming a part of this community. We have purchased this property, so we're hoping that neighbors will open their hearts and minds to us and the populations that we serve. Now that we are property owners in this neighborhood, you know, if this doesn't, if this plan isn't approved, you know, we are looking at opening offices out of there would be our next plan. So, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is that it is our, a priority of ours to be a part of this community. Those offices would serve the re-entry population with our wraparound services in Omaha. And so with that being said, like, we just, we know that our programs are most successful when we have community support, and so I guess that's all I really have to share today. Thank you, guys.
Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Olivia Butts, and I live at seven five two five Brummond in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am here in support of the Mental Health Association's permit to support people with behavioral health challenges. Their support of giving people the resources they need should be applauded, as I know that they will be doing a significant service to this community. As a resident of Lincoln, I'm here today to support and echo kind of the things that she mentioned. I know the things that you've heard before, but I live in a community that is better because the Mental Health Association is there. And with their many services that they provide to Lincoln residents, I know in the organization I work for, in my work life as well as my personal life, I know our community is better because they are there providing these services. Because whether or not Mental Health Association is there, people are still living in Omaha with behavioral health challenges, and adding one more place for support cannot do anything but, but help them. So I urge you to approve the permit, and I urge the community to be open-minded and, and welcome Mental Health Association and be able to, in five and in ten years, have proof that this organization does really great work and the community is better for it. So, thank you.
Excuse me. Did you say you work in the mental health profession?
I work with a community organization, and we work on issue campaigns. We work on criminal justice, mental health, and affordable housing. So we work pretty closely with Mental Health Association and a lot of our issues.
As an organization?
Yeah, our organization does. Our organization is an organization of, actually, it's an interfaith organization of faith communities in Lincoln, and all of our issues just tie in with their issues, which is why I came, and came here today to show support. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Carla Walker, forty-eight twenty Hillside Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm a one hundred percent service-connected, disabled military veteran, and I support MHA because I'm very eligible for their services, and I am standing in front of you a success because of the support of my community. And I was able to reach back, and I continue to reach back and help others so that they can also be successful. And it's important, after you have worked hard, after you have seen various forms of rock bottom, to be able to make those positive changes and be welcomed back. We also have families. We also have children and grandchildren and nieces and nephews, and we want success, and we want safety as well. And without the help of MHA and other programs, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you today. So it's an honor, and I'd like to leave you with a quote from Nelson Mandela, "May your choices reflect your hopes and not your fears." Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Carla. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come on down and give your name and address, please.
Hello, Paul Kolkman, seventy-eight twenty Fairway Drive. Jason Caskey of sixty thirty-eight Country Club Oaks Plaza also asked that I confirm that you received his emails, and if you hadn't, I brought a copy of that from you, but if you were, okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for your time today. I've followed this process since its inception back in February when they had a neighborhood meeting. After that meeting, they came here and said that many of the neighbors were in favor of this, when in fact, they weren't. In fact, most didn't know about the meeting and testified to that at the City Council as well. The City Council, after the project went through here, almost unanimously voted against a transitional living unit there. And while I understand this is a slightly different type of permit, there's going to be a common theme that you see here. This group also stated that they contacted the school that this is right across from and received positive feedback. We followed up with the school. They didn't get positive feedback. Over two hundred neighbors signed a petition against this group. At the City Council, they were told they should have engaged the neighborhood more. So did they with this permit? Not at all. One thing you have not seen and will not see is one neighbor stand up here and say they're in favor of this. It's ironic that they're, in their application, they state what a great relationship they have with their neighbors in Lincoln. So if you lean towards supporting this, I would ask at a minimum that you lay it over, since we only found out about this project last Thursday, so we can go to Lincoln and actually talk to the neighbors and see how they're affected and their thoughts in person, because it's hard to imagine all sunshine and rainbows when all our group sees, and our neighborhood see, there are storm clouds, clouds with this group. Next, in front of the City Council, they swore that no sex offenders would be living here in an addendum. Question I have for them is, do they still make that claim? After the permit wasn't granted, the group then went to the, to the media and filed a complaint of discrimination. And one thing that they don't understand is this is not about discrimination. This is about safety of the neighborhood and the children in the neighborhood, more specifically, across from the school. The group also, in that news article, I'm sorry, is this not popping on here? Stated that Sheriff Hanson supported, wrote a letter of support to this, but he noted that he was assured that only non-violent offenders would live there. Once again, that's ironic because in front of the City Council and the neighbors, they wouldn't make that claim. In fact, they wouldn't claim at all who would live there, other than they eventually acquiesced to not agreeing to sex offenders. So now, in front of everyone here, would they be willing to say that no sex offenders or violent criminals would be living at this premise? And further, are they aware that in their own application for a conditional use permit as opposed to a transitional living use, that no one on work release, probation, or pre-release would be allowed to live there under a probationary status? In this case, if they can, sorry, I should have scrolled up there. I would like to hear them say that none of these individuals... I would like to hear them say that none of these individuals would be living at this unit. And if so, how can we trust them when they have so far offered nothing but deceit to our neighbors? Now, if they can agree to these terms and stick to them, there are still other questions and concerns. Who exactly are they calling disabled? When I was in my residency for surgery, I moonlighted and did history and physical exams for the state of Nebraska for disability exams. When people were determined to be disabled, they went on Medicaid. So will all of these individuals have been declared disabled by the state of Nebraska, which is also a condition of the permit, a record of having such an impairment? If not, are they really not just trying to label the felons and the violent criminals that we're trying to keep out across from a school as disabled to get them in there? Further, I'm sorry, but if this is also just about mental disability, their plan of having only one fairly minimally trained individual there at a time is a setup for disaster. When we have patients with delirium, dementia, psychosis, it takes doctors, nurses, medications, and oftentimes, security to get that situation under control. It's not safe to have that, once again, right across from a school without better setup. Further, how does her work with the disabled coordinate with the entities that we already have here in Omaha? UNMC, CHI, Methodist, Douglas County, have they coordinated inpatient beds with them? That's often required with this population as well. Lastly, in their complaint to the news, Tessa stated that anyone should be able to live anywhere. I and almost everyone I know disagrees that sex offenders and violent people should not live immediately across from a school. In fact, it's ironic, when you read their application, it sounds very similar to their last, minus the section 55-46, I believe it was. Do not be fooled, they're trying to establish a transitional living facility and just labeling it as a disabled facility. Even, I think most of us are strongly in favor of helping the disabled. We all enjoy stories like yours. You want to see people succeed, but this must be done right. In our neighborhood, we have QLI. They do an excellent job. There's a proposed Wounded Warrior project. None of us are standing up here against that. What we are standing up and saying is, this group is not to be trusted. The project does not fit with the design of the neighborhood, and that they are danger both to the school and their clients if they do not have better coverage to help deal with mental disabilities. I humbly ask that you vote against this project.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
My name is Tom Dutter, 6132 Country Club Road, and I am here to request, before you make any decision, is that you would please review the planning board, the planning board review, the city council meeting video on May 14th, when the special use permit for Mental Health Association Transitional Living Home was denied by a 4-1 vote. And I'm requesting the planning board denied the Mental Health Association's small group living permit for the following reasons. The city council, first of all, the city council recommended that the Mental Health Association choose another location. The elementary school is within 100 yards of the house, and this is a residential neighborhood. And we cannot trust the Mental Health Association due to their representatives' misleading and contradictory statements in the May 14th, 2024 council meeting regarding their statements of communicating and notifying neighborhood homeowners and schools of their intentions and refusing to contact homeowners due to their fears of extreme hostility. To my knowledge, the Mental Health Association has not contacted anyone in the country club neighborhood regarding their intent to have a small group living house with disabled individuals. And based on their mission statement, you know, I don't understand how anybody with, you know, the CERN concerns for extreme hostility is exhibited, you know, according to their statements or their perceptions. Why would they want anybody, you know, with any type of disability or physical, mental, or emotional challenges to live in, under those conditions, if they're so afraid of everything? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Kruger, 7520 Fairway Drive. My wife, Ann, is here with me this afternoon. We live just about a quarter of a mile from where this facility is located. I think a little background is in order here. The neighbors, myself specifically, do not oppose any kind of group home that is providing ministry to people with emotional, physical, or mental health. That's not the issue. I believe this structure was built by an entity associated with Boys Town in the early 1980s, maybe. The structure is for a group home. It's got eight separate bedrooms and a large kitchen and stuff. It has not been occupied, I don't think, for about five years. Five years ago, it wasn't being used as a facility to aid kids at Boys Town. It was not used as a youth deal. It was used specifically for adult men with alcohol and drug addiction. You didn't hear any of the neighbors objecting to that, but it operated that way for a long time. So I think what Paul suggested is that this matter ought to be laid over until we get some other information, because this group's webpage is exactly and precisely the same as it was when they made their initial application. And that was, that they wanted to minister to and provide services to felons who had recently been released from incarceration, without any discernment as to whether those were violent bankrupters, without any discernment as to whether those were pedophiles. There was no categorization of that. I have a letter that, by the way, in further support of that this should be laid over. The neighborhood president is Fred Trailer. She emailed me just yesterday, saying that her house has still got serious structural damage from the wind. She is unable to access her internet and computers, so she couldn't even get the email addresses for everybody in our organization. I'm convinced that half the neighborhood doesn't know that we're down here this morning. Half the neighborhood ought to give some input into this process. I did construct a letter that I emailed to Eric England. You have the same first name as I do, sir. We're blessed. And I'd like to just read that. It's kind of like, I think we have time, but it's not that late. But if I get boring, feel free to interrupt me. The previous special use permit application for 6055 Country Club Road was for transitional living in the GC district. Transitional living is defined in the Omaha Municipal Code 55-46 as "a facility licensed or approved by the state or other appropriate agency, which provides for the care and short or long-term overnight occupancy of three or more unrelated persons, any of whom require supervision under a program alternative to imprisonment, including but not limited to pre-trial release, work release, and probationary programs." The planning department report to your board specifically mentions at page three, "The proposed small group living use would not allow for residents defined under transitional living use." As of July 30th, because I went to their website then, the website of the applicant lists nine elements of the organization's strategic plan. Those nine elements are to expand programming intentionally, and they've got some acronyms, to develop employment hubs and so forth, to establish a further Kia House, which is their Lincoln operation, expand the Honolulu House, which is again their Lincoln, formalize warm lighters, I have no idea what that means, expand outreach into permanent long rooms housing, partner with providers, expand pure bridge programming and development implications with bilingual. Nothing in their applicant, nothing in their website proposes or shows that they have any newfound interest in providing mental health services in Lincoln, Omaha, Grand Island, or anywhere else, and certainly not 60th and Country Club. This application that they have is suddenly transformed. Here's some questions that I think this board ought to be asking of them and of the staff of the city of Omaha. And they are not in any particular order, but does anybody have any formal education in assessing the needs of, quote, "disabled individuals," and that's the term of art that they used in their application? I don't know what disabled individuals means from a legal standpoint. For purposes of administering compliance with the proposed special use permit, has the applicant agreed to or even proposed a binding legal definition of what disabled individuals is? This seems awfully loosey-goosey a definition. How does the applicant propose that the city of Omaha monitor the actual usage and admission criteria so as to assure the citizens of Omaha that this second application is nothing more than an attempt to usurp the city council's earlier rejection of applicants' requests to provide a group home for felons who have been recently released from prison? As Paul mentioned, Quality Living is right there in the neighborhood, less than a mile away. Has anybody consulted Quality Living to see whether there's any needs that aren't being met by Quality Living? Quality Living has a full cadre of licensed rehabilitation experts, highly sophisticated board of directors, and a competent and experienced management team. Has anyone reached out to Quality Living, QLI, to ascertain whether QLI sees any needs for applicants' proposed group home? Does Tessa Dominguez have any connection with the other houses that are here in Omaha that are providing services to felons?
Eric, can I stop you for a second?
Certainly.
Are you just rereading that, the letter, the information that you sent?
I didn't know that it got delivered to you. I physically was able to deliver it just about 11:30 this morning, I think.
We've got it.
Oh, you got it, okay. I didn't know you had it. And I didn't mean to insult you, Chairman, by reading it, but yes, I am.
No, that's all right. The board brought it up to me, and yeah, it looks like you're just rereading that.
And if I'm being redundant by reading that, I'll stop reading and try to summarize it. The point is that nothing that I can see, based on my look at what their website is, that this group has anything other in mind than exactly what they applied to the first time around. Their mission is to provide services, rehabilitation services, to people, to felons who a judge decided needed to be removed from society and was incarcerated. Some transitional living and so forth. We need some clarification on exactly the type of criminal conduct that got those people into that thing.
We'll bring Tessa back up.
And I think that the best thing that could happen is, if this got laid over until we got some answers to some of these questions.
Okay.
Anything else you want?
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Tessa, did you want to come up and address these concerns?
Tessa Dominguez, Mental Health Association of Nebraska, 1645 N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, First concern, I guess, that I'll address is that our organization originated out of advocates for people living with behavioral health challenges. That's been the foundation of our organization since 2001. It's why we formulated, is to have a voice in policies and care plans that affected us, and we wanted to have a voice in that. From there, our programs have grown into direct services that started with primarily the community. We didn't even actually work with reentry until 2015 is when we started working with the reentry population. That hasn't changed the direction or the purpose, I think, of our organization any. It's only expanded what we do to multiple different populations of people that live with behavioral health challenges. Secondly, what I will say is that when we talk about, I think that when people hear disability, I think that there's a misunderstanding of what that means. Like, we always think the worst of the worst, people that are in a high-level need of care, and that's just not the case, right? Like, that's not the case for everybody. There are some individuals that need a higher level of care. That's not the services that we provide. Our services are, like, if there were individuals that we came across that we felt like maybe weren't, like, we weren't able to provide the level of care that they need, then we would work with other community partners to get them referred on to the facilities or institutions that could provide those types of care. With peer support, it is individuals that live with these types of challenges, providing support to others in our community with similar challenges, and how to get plugged into resources, how to get to know, like, where to go in our community, how to go, how do we, what does wellness and recovery look like for us? How do we live independently in our community successfully? And so our staff does go through extensive training, which I think I talked to you guys about before when we were here. There's a lot of different training that our staff do go through to be able to provide this support. On top of the 40-hour training that they do for intentional peer support that teaches them relational aspects of how to use those experiences to support others, they also go through CPR training. Oh my gosh. I'm not prepared to list all them, but I can send those to you guys if we need them. Like, they just go through extensive, extensive training before we just put people together, I guess. In regards to the request to lay over, what I will say is that we've been reaching out in this community since, well, I think February was the date that was, or the month that was given. And we have brought Lincoln neighbors and community members to these hearings with us. They've testified on our behalf. Sheriff Aaron Hanson actually came to our transitional living house and talked to our neighbors personally. I'm not sure where this understanding came from that was put in the paper. I can't speak to that. But what I can say is that after touring our properties and meeting with our neighbors, he did write a letter of support, which we have provided to you guys. I've had numerous conversations with him and asked each time that I've provided that to you if that was okay to do so. But in all of this time, I mean, we're in July now, so for the last five, six months, not one neighbor has reached out to us and asked to come to our programs. I think we've made that invitation clear. We made that clear at the neighborhood meeting that we held. We did hand out 300 flyers. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that will say that didn't happen, but I can tell you it did. We did talk to the schools, you know, and so at this point, there's no point in debating that. It kind of comes down to a he said, she said. So I guess I'm just open to answering any questions that you guys might have for us. But as far as defending our character, I don't know that that's what I'm here to do at this point.
I do have a question really quick.
Yeah, absolutely.
I might have missed this the last time, but can you talk a little bit about how your staff assesses individuals to determine if they fall in line with the kind of program scope of work and their intended use of the facility? How do they, and then you mentioned, like, certain individuals get referred on. How do they assess an individual?
Yeah, so we would have an application process that individuals would fill out, and then based off of that application, after that, we would schedule interviews with them, or we do one-on-one interviews to kind of talk about, like, what their goals are for their own wellness, their own future, what that looks like. We'd talk about what services we provide, and together, it would be mutually decided if this was the right fit. They would have the opportunity to decide if this was a level of support that was going to be most beneficial to them, as well as our staff doing the interviews would also have the opportunity to make that determination if this felt like the right fit for what we provide. we provide. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And so then, are there cases in existing facilities where, you know, maybe someone is enrolled and then after a certain amount of time, it's deemed, okay, you actually fall outside of that scope?
Yeah, I mean, that's happened, where we've had people in our programs or that we've worked with that maybe in the beginning, they're, like, they were in a better place, and then maybe things have, like, their mental health challenges have progressed or gotten worse. And in those situations, we, we work with, if there's anybody else that they're working with at the time, we would work with them, other community providers, to make sure that they were able to get the right level of care, if that's not us that can provide that. Yeah.
So, I've got a couple of questions for you, Tessa.
Yeah.
You said you talked to the school.
Yeah.
Did this, did the school, because you brought up the, the point that the school did not say that they supported the transitional living facility? Are you saying that they did support it?
So, I want to first clarify that it wasn't me that went in and spoke with them. I have another staff member that was passing out flyers that day that went in and spoke with the school. They left multiple flyers there if they wanted to hand them out to anybody else. And my understanding of how that conversation went is that they're, like, I don't know that they said, yes, we'll show up and support you guys, but there wasn't any lack of support. They just said, thank you for the information, we appreciate you guys coming in and talking with us and sharing this information with us.
But you weren't there?
I was not. It was a staff member of mine.
And you talked about the flyers that you distributed to most of the neighborhood. Was that when you were trying to get the transitional living facility or when you changed the focus to the behavioral health?
Transitional living.
So you've done nothing to address, to, to, to try and reach out to the neighbors with regards to the change in focus to behavioral health?
That's correct, and I can explain why that is. When we did hold the community meeting, there was an individual that sat in the front row that was very, very direct about, they're not afraid of us or our populations because him and his wife are both a great shot. And so...
Are both what?
A great shot, which to me implied that felt threatening. And so, at that point, like, I didn't feel like it was in my best interest to go door-to-door. In the first round, I did reach out. We are in one neighborhood association, but there's another one that's really close. So I had reached out to both neighborhood associations in the very beginning and asked for email lists so that I could invite people to this community meeting. I was told that those lists were incomplete and that we wouldn't be able to utilize them. However, they're still being utilized, just not with us being a part of that. So, it, so I guess I'm, there's a lot of stigma that's happening, I think, here, and I don't know how else to break that except for just to be there and to do that. And so far, that hasn't been permitted, you know?
People like to, you know, they like transparency. We all like transparency, right?
Absolutely.
So, so I hope you understand where, you know, there's some concerns with regards to, we need to know what's going on, right?
Yeah.
The transparency piece of that, so, I, I get that, right? But you still need to try and, I think, anyway, reach out to the community and say, here's what we're thinking, right?
Yeah.
There's nothing better than getting the community support behind you.
Yeah.
If you can. Couple of questions. Will this be open campus?
Yes.
Okay. The, the individuals that will be living in the facility, are they going to be referred? Or is there an application process? How do they get into your facility?
There is an application process. They could be referred.
By?
Other institutions, other pla, other community providers. It could be a referral process. It also could be a self-referral that they reached out to one of us and said, hey, we'd like to apply to be at your house. And then we would give them, put them, it would be the same application process across the board.
And I don't know what your application questionnaire looks like, but is one of the questions on there, do you have any felony sex offenses, anything like that? What?
Um, trying to, I don't think that's...
Specifically, I'm interested in, do you know if you'll ever have any sex offenders or violent criminals?
Um, so, with the sex offenders...
And I'm asking this because you're so close to a school.
Right, correct. With the sex offenders, the same thing like I shared with you guys last time, like, we abide by all state laws, regulations that are put in place. Those things already exist that state where people on that registry can live. With the city council hearing, there was a request of us to sign a different amendment that hasn't been presented to us so far. We wouldn't be opposed to that, but at this point, that hasn't been requested of us. The only thing that I brought up at the city council hearing is that when you, when you look at the sex offender registry, that's a whole wide range of charges, right? And so, like, I just caution that there's a lot of danger to broad brushing that entire population, so...
Just takes, just takes one, though. I hope you understand where, what...
I hear you, yes.
These lines of questioning, only takes one of those.
Mm-hmm. And there are...
Could cause problems.
Like I said, there are regulations that are already in place that state, you guys have city ordinances for one, that state how far close people can live to schools and daycare and those types of things as well.
I'm surprised you came back with, with a refocus to behavioral health. So can you talk about why you decided to come back with the behavioral health from the transitional living? And I've got a follow-up question to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, obviously, we have, like, our first interest, right? And then that's not approved. We own this property. What are we gonna do with it? What fits within our model? What fits within our, our mission as an organization? And how can we utilize this property? So, that's where we've shifted. Like I said, behavioral health challenges is and always has been a part of our priority population. So we've just decided to focus more broadly on that population rather than it being so narrowed to Department of Corrections transition.
So is your primary focus behavioral health or transitional living?
Behavioral health.
In your website...
Can you explain what your...
Excuse me, I'm just, let me finish here.
Can you explain what the difference is?
I can just finish here real quick, okay?
I just need to know the difference as she's explaining it so I can understand. I'm sorry.
Okay. But on your website here, I'm reading this in order, qualifies for services, becoming out of a state correctional facility. That should be your primary focus, yes, that's the number one on your list. Within 18 months after release or on parole or on state probation or a felony or HANU may be available to those type of state probation, please speak to probation about utilizing HANU to get referral process.
So that's...
That's on your website.
Correct. That would be specifically to our reentry programs. So, I, I guess maybe I need to go into that again a little bit up here. So, with our programs, all of our programs have been dual-sided. So, like, when we started our HOPE program back in 20, is that 20, 2008? Something like that? Like, when we started HOPE, it was supportive employment for people with behavioral health challenges. It worked in collaboration with Voke Rehab, right? When in 2015, we expanded that program to be reentry-focused as well as community-focused. So there's different staff that work on different sides of that program. Most of our programs have worked that way because there is such a need in the reentering population to provide supports. And so, most of our programs have worked that way, where we have different staff that would do one versus the other. However, like, the umbrella of what we do is behavioral health challenges. And so, that could be anybody. It could be somebody coming out of treatment. That could be somebody in the community who's struggling to find what wellness and recovery looks like for them, whether that's because of mental health challenges or addiction challenges. Like, it, like, it's, so it just expands that? And I don't know if that helps make that clear.
That's why I asked, that's why I asked the questions about, do you know, and I don't know, you probably can't answer this, but will you have any sex offenders? Will you have any violent criminals? You said it's open to everybody. So then I'll have one more question, Jeff, and I'm sorry.
You're okay.
But I'll finish with one more question, then I'll shut up.
Yeah.
Can you guarantee that this will always be a behavioral health facility and not go back to a transitional living facility like you originally planned for?
So, what I can guarantee you is that I could not make it a transitional living facility without coming back before this board, correct?
Well, that's true, but things happen without our approval, too.
That's never been our way of doing things, and I think that when we had Lincoln City Council in here the last time that testified on our behalf that attributed to that, we have gone through all of the processes. We've been in communication with city planning. We've, we've done everything that's been asked of us, responded to every email, every question, like, that's just not our way of doing things. We've never just come in and done things. So I can guarantee you that that would never happen without it coming back before this board.
Well, and, and, and just one more comment, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm asking this question just, I'm...
That's okay.
Because of the school.
Mm-hmm.
What you're doing, providing the service, I don't, I, I admire what you're doing for the community. It's great work, but not by school. That's my concern.
The only thing that I would say to that is that, that one in five people live with mental health challenges.
Sure.
There are a, a large number of people that live with addiction challenges. They live in our communities already. All communities have schools, parks, libraries, daycares. All of those things exist in every community. And, like, we also, living with those challenges, have children. We have grandchildren. Like, so, I understand the, the concerns with a school being nearby, and because I also have a family of my own, I can see why that is a, a point of concern. However, like, we, people are already in this community that live with these challenges, whether it's acknowledged or not. And we're here to provide the support that individuals need to have that successful independence when they're acknowledging that they need that support.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Tessa, can I go back to this? So, could, I'm sorry, I don't understand it very well.
That's okay.
Mental health challenges and such, but as behavioral health challenges, where are you, are, are they coming still from jail and they, and, and many things can be determined as behavioral health challenges? So are we, are we just scrubbing the name and changing and saying, well, we're still gonna be taking felons in and we're still gonna be taking... When I read it originally, I thought it was just more that you're going to be looking for people that, you know, weren't, had, had not been incarcerated and were, were going to be there for a while to try to transition maybe onto their own living. But this still sounds very much like what it was before under a different name. Can you, can you help me with this?
Yeah, so what, what this does is it broadens that scope, right? Where before it was very narrowly, people reentering from the Department of Correction. When we talk about behavioral health challenges, that's anybody in the community that lives with mental health challenges, addiction challenges, that are working towards overcoming those and finding that wellness and recovery in their own life. This, this broadens that scope. It could be people that are coming out of, out of treatment centers. It could be people that are coming out of county jail. It could be, like, it could be people just living in the community. Like, there is no determination about that. It's more of like the, the idea of, like, this is the service that we want to provide and we're, we're broadening that scope of that. The other thing that I would say to that is that this is a permitted use in residential, which the last, it, it's permitted by use in residential. And the last time that I was before this board, it was asked of us to rezone to residential, which, if we would have rezoned, this would be a permitted use for us at that point and wouldn't need to come before this board again. So, leaving it zoned as commercial, commercially zoned, it is then asked that we ask for the conditional use permit, and that's why we're here.
So still, go back to, to my, my question is, where, where, where do you think you'll be getting most of your residents?
I can't say where most of them are gonna come from. It's gonna be wherever we have funding sources to provide for the service.
So you're well-known in the communities of, you know, at this point, as, as being able to help people transition to, to maybe living on their own and such, but those still same networks you're gonna, you're gonna be using, correct? You're not, you're, you're...
Correct.
I mean, you started off as m- mental health, but now you've transitioned to this kind of area, which is just great, I applaud it. But I, it doesn't seem like you're going back to mental health networks to, to bring people in. Now, you've broadened it, I understand that, brings a whole lot more, but, but it just seems like we're still, we're still getting our, our residents from the same places we were before.
I would say that transitioned from one to the other and not bringing it back is the law, the wrong verbiage. We've never transitioned to anything. Again, we've expanded our services to meet multiple populations, right? We've never gotten rid of one to take on the other. We've expanded those services. So it's not about a transitioning or going back to. It's, this is what we've always done, and for this house, it just has a broader umbrella of populations that we can serve than, like, say, our HANU house, right? Our KIA house, even though it's a shorter stay, is very similar to, to this, except for it's a respid state, and it serves people in the community with behavioral health and behavioral health challenges. So, like, the only thing that would determine that is, like, having that, that funding source. So we would, you know, that would be the requirement, is that we would have to work together to navigate where this funding source is coming from to support different individuals. The...
And do you have meetings, I mean, like, when, when the person that's working there onsite, are, are there meetings for, for the residents, like, on how to become, you know, better, become better in society? Is that, is that all part of the, the, the program, I guess, like?
Yeah, we would have house, regular house meetings with all of the guests of the house and our staff. Our staff have their own separate meetings where they're provided co-reflection and opportunities to navigate maybe difficult situations or conversations and then come back and provide that support that's necessary. We also would provide other groups, like, if that's trauma groups, RAP, which is Wellness Recovery Action Planning, rent-wise, that, you know, helps people learn how to be good tenants and know what tenant, like landlord-tenant laws are, certifications that are accepted by HUD, you know, that are needed for that type of housing. So, like, all of our, like, I, like, we'll probably do, like, AA meetings if we can find somebody that is interested in holding that in the house, like 12-step meetings. Anything that's related to that wellness and recovery piece would be the type of support that we would be providing in there. Additionally, what I will say to you is that, like, I think that with us coming up here, the only network you guys have heard of us working with is Corrections, but we also have had meetings with Region 6 and the Behavioral Health Team out of Region 6. And so, our network, I think, is, is a little bit bigger than maybe what's assumed of us, even more so in, in Lincoln, as we are office in the Region 5 building. But we do have those connections with Region 6 as well, and I think the longer we're here, the more we'll build those connections.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional questions, comments for Tessa? Okay, thank you, Tessa.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I closed, Eric, I closed the public meeting. Eric?
No.
I closed the public meeting. You have to sit down, please.
And I'm asking, I don't know the procedures, but, but could you reopen that? I have received an email of one neighbor that spoke at the city council that I think is probably, she would like this letter read.
How long is the letter?
I think it will take me about four and a half minutes to read it.
Uh, we'll stop. I, I'm not gonna allow that, so, all right.
I'll, I'll sit there.
Yeah, you can. All right. Go ahead, Eric.
Sure. Yeah, so, obviously, the city's recommendation report is, is focused on, you know, the criteria set out in the small group living, disabled facility. We acknowledge, but don't get into a lot of detail about the previous submittal for the special use permit regarding transitional living. In our view, that is a separate application, a separate process, and completely different of, of qualifications of who could live in this home. So, what's before us is the small group living disabled. We have a definition of the, within the zoning code, which mirrors federal law of what the term handicap means. I won't go through that. It's in page two of the recommendation report. But handicap or disability can come in all forms. It could be mental, physical, you know, on a wide range. And so, the, you know, the conversation about, I get it, it's close to a school. We've had a lot of small group living facilities or large group living that are close to schools. You know, sex offender, that's nothing that we deal with in the zoning code. I know, I know what's out there. I know, you know, obviously, I'm not gonna just totally dismiss that, but, you know, it, I think we have to be careful about who we're labeling of, of who could live in these homes. And small group living is a residential use. And, you know, like Tessa had mentioned, the only reason we're here is because it has this odd commercial zoning, which opens it up to several more intense uses than I know than what the neighborhood would want. But it is unique with that commercial zoning. It's in place. Obviously, there, there could be a simple rezoning, downzoning, which is part of our recommendation. Again, we don't believe the commercial zoning is appropriate for this property. So as a condition of, of support and approval for this application, we are, you know, recommending that it be rezoned to R5, which is just basically, i- if that, you know, if this was approved and the rezoning was approved, which it should because it's master plan compliant, you know, that would just become a permitted use and basically the conditional use permit would go away. So, that is part of our recommendation. The application has provided all material sufficient of what is required for an applicant to submit for a small group living disabled. So, you know, I know there was the previous case, and I don't... So, you know, I know there was the previous case, and I don't want to just, you know, brush it away, but it is different. This is a conditional use permit for a different use type than what was previously denied by the city council. I should state, though, there should not be individuals living in this home that are serving out the duration of their, you know, imprisonment term. So, you know, I don't know the exact wording, but as transitional living is defined, there shouldn't be those individuals living here. Now, if somebody has been released from prison and, you know, even if they're on probation, there's a lot of people on probation. There's people that are on probation that don't go to prison. You know, that's kind of the clear definition between parole and probation that the city views when we look at these different use types. So, sure, there could be pers- people that, you know, because of their connections, have served out their term and are living here. Or it could be something completely, you know, unrelated, as Tessa described. And, you know, we just have to be careful about labeling and having this great fear. There's many people close to me that would fit under handicap definition and, you know, could live at this facility and, and for wide various regions, and they're great people. So I know I've mentioned that before, and not to get into specifics, but I think we just have to be careful about labeling, you know, a population and that truly exists. So staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit to a small group living disabled facility subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Does anybody have a comment to make before I ask?
I know we want to kind of not focus on that previous application. So shouldn't we still hold them to, to have that neighborhood meeting to discuss everything? I mean, if, if it's brand new, then, then it should have been more neighborhood conversation. But I'm, I'm asking the question, is that, because we typically ask them to meet with neighbors on, on, on projects. And so since we don't want to go back to that one, wouldn't we have wanted to start this whole process all over again?
Sure. That's up for the board to decide. Obviously, that's not a city requirement. I mean, I know the board. It's important for them. You know, sometimes we've seen these cases, meetings might not help. People have their mind made up, but that is entirely for you and the board to discuss and factor in.
I think, I think just to expand on that, I think that's where a lot of the confusion comes now. You know, a small group living, we, we prove how many of these in a year. I mean, lots of them. And it's a vital need that the community needs and it's an excellent way to help people if they're disabled to get back into a productive life. And so I think that unfortunately, in this circumstance, this is being clouded by the previous application. And I do think that more communication on behalf of the applicant with the neighborhoods, whether they feel comfortable about it or not, would have helped alleviate possibly some of the concerns. Almost all the concerns that were raised were dealing with the transitional type need. And I, and that's the same concern we had the first time. And, and so I guess I, I, whether you, if somebody chooses to make it as part of the application, I would say, "To be a good neighbor, you darn well better do it." Otherwise, you don't want to be a, you know, somebody in the neighborhood that nobody likes, so.
You know, I think I'll say to that is if you have that meeting, I certainly want to know what the results of that meeting are. So I wouldn't really want to vote on anything yes or no without knowing if they're going to have a meeting with the neighbors.
And I'll, I'll just say, I think communication with your neighbors is important. It sounds like the applicant, the applicants have made attempts. I understand you're, you're saying that this was for a previous item, but there has been attempts to connect with the community. The, the comment that Tessa made about her, you know, safety being threatened is, to me, is scary and concerning. I've been personally in a situation like that. And so I don't know that I would be supportive of us requiring any additional outreach as a part of the recommendation. I just want to throw that out there.
Any additional comments, questions? Are you guys ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll move to approve the conditional use permit to allow a small group living disabled facility on the property subject to the following five conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Sidney, thank you for not getting after me for saying, "Do you guys have..."
I don't mind it. I say that, too.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes, but without the, without this requirement of a meeting, I'm still saying it's something you better do. And I'm also saying to the community, you better get her open forum to allow her to make her case as well. It's, it's not, it's unfair for anybody to be subjected to threats or things like that. It's just not appropriate at all, so.
We didn't add that.
No.
No, I know. I'm, I'm saying that she still should, just our recommendation that she do it, not a, not that we stipulate that she do it.
Franklin?
Uh, yes, and, and the other thing I'll add is I stand behind fully the kind of sentiment that outreach and connecting with your neighbors is important. I will make the, maybe offer small, maybe one-on-one. Interactions with neighbors often is more productive than opening up a gymnasium and giving people a microphone. Yes, though.
More?
No.
Paige?
No.
Sotolongo?
No.
Denied?
Chair. I haven't voted yet.
Oh, chair, sorry.
If I vote yes, we're, we're at a, and that's where I'm tending to go. We, then we have a split. And Jennifer, do we, do we have to entertain? I'm going to vote yes. We're three and three. Do we have to entertain another, another motion?
You have to disallize, okay. You can, it fails for lack of the necessary four. You can move to lay it over till next month when you have a full board. Do we have a full board? No? You can entertain motions until it's disposed of. Technically, then there is no action. I'd have to go back and look and see exactly how that impacts their application. I mean, to that extent, they could bring it back again.
Okay, let me, does anyone on the board want to offer another motion? Doesn't look like it. No?
What would, so if there is a motion to lay over and that's approved, then what?
That's one of the options, yes.
That's an option. You can move to lay over.
But for what future, a complex? For what future?
Then we, we have a board that could vote one way or the other.
We would have seven members. And they have time to talk to each other.
I'll, I'll make a motion to lay this case over.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
More? Paige?
No.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, five to one.
Laid over.
Okay. Oh, okay. I thought Sidney was-
Sorry, nope.
That's all right. Before I ask for a motion on last month's meetings and pre-meeting minutes, Sidney's not going to, your term ends in next month.
I don't know. Yeah, will I be here next month?
Yes, you're here next month. Your term is at the end of the month, so.
So you got one, one more month of me.
We got one more month of Sidney. I hope you'll be here so we can have some comments for you.
You'll come get me, yeah.
Yeah, otherwise we'll have to hunt you down.
Yes, I'll be here.
All right, so guys, kind of think about that if you would, so. All right, do we have a motion for July's public meeting and pre-meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve July's pre-meeting minutes and the meeting minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Third. No.
Kathy, please record the vote.
More?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.